Judge.
Good morning, it's nine o'clock, May the ninth, twenty twenty-two, and our regular Commissioners' Court Meeting is now in session. First item on the agenda is roll call by our county clerk, Mary Jane Ribeiro, the law. Mary Jane, good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Morning.
Judge Rathmore.
Present.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Present.
Commissioner Elizondo.
Present.
Commissioner Solis.
Present.
And Commissioner Gassa.
Present.
We have a court, Judge.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Next item is our invocation by Dr. Roger Mittred. Commissioners Court shall have Dr. Mittred, good morning.
Good morning. If you bow your heads, I mean, we'll pray. Our Father give her wisdom to all who say, "Who ask?" We're reminded today that the wisest man who ever lived was King Solomon. Solomon himself wrote these words in Proverbs fifteen twenty-two. Plans fail for lack of counsel, but with many advisors they succeed. So your word again provides for us the answers to our present needs. We approach today in this assembly believing that as we trust in your guidance and seek your wisdom, our greatest needs in this county and in our lives will be met. So we ask for a special enabling for our leaders to govern the people of this county. May our leaders govern with justice and also mercy, with strength and also compassion, and with boldness and also humility, and may they be granted the ability to receive your counsel and then to apply to the needs before them today. Bless our judge and commissioners as they fully realize the responsibilities which they shoulder and also from where their strength comes to handle those responsibilities. In the name of the one who has who has come and is coming again, in Christ's name we pray this today. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four, Communications Commissioners. Well, we had a really tough weekend, really hot weather. Hopefully everything, I know we've had a lot of issues with the heat and drought. If you want to remind ranchers that there are programs available to deal with the drought conditions in our county. The Farm Service Agency has a livestock assistance program that is really helpful to to help out with all the all the spending where ranchers are doing with with feeds and hay. So there is a program available, and it's ongoing and certainly easy to apply to it before and and have to get some help. But the drought is really taking its toll on all those. I know our lake levels are still really, really down. I think they're holding firm, about two fifty-eight, two fifty-nine. But yeah, it's a it's a serious situation, as we were at place last year, seems like every year. I don't know, any other communications? Been quiet a couple of weeks.
Well, I know, Judge, that I've been working with Nerea. She's back there with with the USDA program. I think we already had like sixty applications, I guess, together with the ones that you've had here in your office, the ones we've had over there for Vivian. And I think around seventeen have already been approved. And there are half along the yard, they're working on them, and they're working on the project, so it's really good. I just encourage more people to apply, because this is a program that has always been there in place. I guess it was just kind of like.
Yes, certainly with with the storm damage that we had last year.
It's been helping out a lot of people. So I encourage people to to come to the office and pick up an application. And I know that Eric comes once a week.
Yes.
And he helps out the people.
Yeah, Eric, new CD.
Yes, on USDA, yes.
That's a good program. I think you're getting some good recommendations. Also, the liquid tax help is still ongoing. I see that. Is that still ongoing? Is that, are we getting applicants to help with their?
Yes. I think with the twenty-nine, they sent me an email. They even got applications had changed.
Uh-huh.
Now they're going from sixteen, twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty twenty-one. They're helping out with those, because they they keep updating.
Okay, so that's that's quite a number of years that residents can get help on with their the liquid taxes that they also, and then we're also helping my office and the type selectors office is helping us. And of course, the library is also helping with applications for the resident.
So far, we collected in four checks that they've sent in, we collected twenty thousand.
Okay, very good.
And there's ten that have already been approved, so it's it's going to get announced. But the word is out.
It helps the county's collections and the schools' collections, but it also helps our residents.
The taxpayers.
Yes, absolutely. So I urge all those residents that, and I think most of them were notified, is that correct?
Everybody was notified. I sent out letters notifying the ones that killed them.
Any other Communications Commissioners that want to move on to public comment? This section provides the public, well, under Communications, I don't see Danny, our fire chief, obviously had an update on our COVID. He did, I guess he's busy today. He did send me a his status report. As far as vaccinations, this from four twenty-five twenty-two through the ninth of of May, we've had a full of fifty-two Moderna vaccines have been administered. And out of those, four were the number first booster and forty-eight were the second booster. COVID test, at the community center, the advisor said they were no longer going to be testing curative, so they did remove their their testing boot. I believe the fire department will still be testing, if I'm not mistaken. CBS is still providing vaccines. The National Guard will be at the community center Tuesday only from twelve P M. to seven P M. And DSHS office is also providing vaccines to the public. And I guess you put in the curative last testing date will be was five, six, twenty twenty-two, and the National Guard will de-mobilize on the eighteenth of this month. So as far as their vaccination, they're ramping down and slowing down on that.
Judge, on the curative testing, was that because of the lack of attending or?
Both and lack of funding. I think Congress, I think, is trying to increase some funding for the entire program, so I think a little of both.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. This section provides the public the opportunity to address the Commissioners' Court on any item on the agenda. Any member of the public wish to address the court at this time? If not, we'll move on to item number six, approval of invoices. Any package Commissioners, we had invoices from April the twenty-second, twenty twenty-two through May the fifth, twenty twenty-two, for a total of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and three cents.
Motion to add.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to approve invoices as presented second by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion? All those in pairs, the ayes.
Ayes.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes. Item number seven is approval of treasury report. Mr. Sarina, good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I'll let him pass up the first report like I'm writing. On the first page, it shows our investments. That's about the national bank, which is our county deposit board. And we have a total of eleven million, four hundred and three thousand, seven thirty-four point fourteen in total investment. Interest earned for the month was three thousand, three hundred and thirty-six point thirty-seven. And year to date, we've recorded fifty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-one point sixty-six. Following that, our checking accounts, and I'll go over the operating account, thirty billion dollars of six hundred and one thousand, eighty-six point eighty-eight, and we ran deposits of two million, five fifty-eight, eight thirty-six point oh nine, and expense out of there, two million, eight seventy-three, six point three point seventy-one, and left a vending balance at the end of the month of two hundred and eighty-six, two ninety-nine point twenty-six. Then the general fund below that one, we're still leaving it open, because I've been notifying the agencies of the new checking account that we're going to be using. So we've left a little money there, and I've notified many of the agencies that are running deposits to that account. But that had a beginning balance of thirty-eight thousand, eight sixty-six, twenty-three, and we had a cost coming of one hundred and ninety-five thousand, forty-one point sixty-five, and a vending balance of two thirty-three, nine hundred and eight point forty-eight.
So those one hundred and ninety-five thousand came from state agencies, or?
Yes, and I know that I don't have anything recorded frozen down on the report for the Sheriff's Department.
Right.
I know that the Marshals are holding our, releasing our funds because of the rule of the dance number.
Okay.
But I'm waiting. This weekend I had to get an email that I'm going to work on this morning. There are several entities, not only counties throughout the state in the U.S. that they were changing software, and we caught, and we got caught in the middle. In our county, they flagged the fiscal address.
Okay.
For the county. In the past, I guess, I've been renewing for twenty years, and we had an old fiscal address, so it didn't match with the two hundred and seventy-seven.
Wow, so that's the old of now.
So I've been providing copies of invoices and IRS letters and whatever, and they keep asking for documentation to verify the actual correct fiscal address. We need to get that fixed, so we need to release the funds. I notified the U.S. Marshals, because I get called from the Sheriff's Department that they cannot submit their reimbursements for the inmates. But that's in the works, and all I have to do is just wait for that email. But I will get on it again today, because it's been a long one. We look at page three, it showed the other accounts of others that's official, not all of them, but they had a total of the invoice of one million, six ninety-eight, three ninety-five, twenty-five. So we ran deposits of six hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven fifty point eight-four, and then spent out six eighty-seven, eight oh two point ninety-three. And the ending balance for all those checking accounts was one million, six hundred and thirty-four, three hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-six cents. The next page is the one of those kind of funny. This is our new operating account, that all are possibly funneled to. And if you look at the last column, even though it indicates a negative, in front of the number under the credit column, those are the balances in those checking accounts. So if you were to look at the, you know, say, hotel motel, we have one hundred and fifty-three, even though it shows a negative, but it's under the credit column. So those are the balances. If you want to look at the balance of tobacco settlement, shows one hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight forty-five, sixty-two. So that's the way you would read. These are the balances in those checking accounts. And this will be the only checking account that we use or not. And we still are keeping the other ones open. And we look at page number four, the phone checks issued.
On the previous page, I see what it is, that we did submit for reimbursement on Operation Lone Star. We have received that.
We've been, no, we've been submitting the reimbursement for Operation Lone Star on the Sheriff's side, yes.
Yes. Well, I mean, it looks like we've been approved to be receiving reimbursement. I guess it just hasn't come in yet.
It hasn't come in, right. We haven't had any problems other than on one of the reimbursements we asked for, I think, a total of six vehicles that were under those grants, or and we went in there, and there was two additional vehicles for the Sheriff's Department, ATVs, the little trailer.
Yes.
The only thing that got rejected was the little trailer, which Mr. Fain and I will be submitting this month. We're doing those on a monthly basis.
Okay.
And there were lacking like serial number or some numbers that we didn't input into the system, because they were a little bit.
So you'll stay on top of that. You just want to make sure we get, we can afford that.
No, yes, no, definitely. The good thing is that we got the green light to submit all those reimbursements on the law enforcement side.
Okay.
So all that overtime, the vehicles we had purchased, the only thing that we got bad was that little trailer was to, I think, four hundred thousand.
Okay.
It's a very small amount, but we'll have to submit the serial and model number, whatever.
Okay.
And we have to do that adjustment, but everything else, everything will be fine.
We're on page four, I think, before I.
Yeah, that's on the toll checks that were issued, has the general fund account. We issued a total of one million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, six ninety-seven point fifty-six for the month. And year to date, on the very bottom, it'll show the total amount of checks that we've issued from the beginning of our fiscal year, October one. We'll issue thirteen million, seventy thousand, seven ninety-eight point forty. The following page shows these checks coming from different funds than that total one million, eight hundred and fifty-seven, eight sixty-six, sixty-four, and that's jail fund, waterworks, special road bridge, and so forth. Page number six shows our electricity payment for the month. And for the month of April, the audit department did submit a payment for fifty thousand, three ninety-five point thirty-six, and we submitted a payment for a order of seven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-four spent. Year to date, that's very bottom, has the total amount of electricity that we spent, and that total two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five fifty-seven, four forty-six, and the water total forty-one thousand, one oh three point one two. Following page shows our revenues collected from the royalty account that we did a direct deposit from Hill Corp. And for the month of April, we received a direct deposit of ten thousand, three hundred and one dollars and fifty-four cents. And year to date, we collected sixty-eight thousand, one thirty-one, one twenty-six from those couple of vessels that we have. And year to date, collection is at one nineteen point fifty-three percent.
I think I think natural gas prices actually a little way dollars per gee, so yeah, this number will be going up.
Will be going up.
Which we have more production, it's about the country, I think, so, yeah, price of natural gas has really shot up, so.
Following page shows the rental income. For the month of April, we only recorded fifteen hundred dollars from the Vivian rent, and one thousand, one hundred from the community center across the highway, and no other facility has delivered any rent, I guess, in any of those other buildings.
I know that we have a check in some of us, Mr. Fain.
Once we get it, we'll record it and it'll show.
And just for the public's information, we will be opening up the public pools this year, so we should be seeing some some traffic there on the income section for the public pools.
Right. Following page number nine is the monies collected by our county clerk, this is on ten, for the month of April, six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight point twenty-five, and to fund fifteen, twenty-five dollars. Our district clerk, this is on ten, three thousand, six forty-four, and to fund fifteen, one thousand, six seventy-nine, twenty forty-five. We armed ordinance, we collected twenty thousand, and the sales tax came in at one hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven point sixty-six for the month of April.
On the armed ordinance, you're saying there's other machines or rules or?
The additional submitted on option twenty, so that's why you see a small amount. So yeah, we did notify them that there.
So all of these, the seven hundred and sixty thousand that was collected mid-year, this will be in addition to the ones that were approved for the year that paid in July, or?
Well, some came in and reopened and under a new name, so it doesn't mean that we'll see an additional.
Yeah, they're going to add seven hundred and fifty thousand to.
Right, right. We're just hoping that, I know there's a couple of them closed that I have an office appointment in the valley, and there's two of them.
I've already closed.
That are hoping closed, so I'm hoping that maybe they'll reopen, that those are big establishments with a lot of machines, so we may be short here.
I believe it's David's June?
July first.
July first, yes.
That's right.
Yeah, we had so because of pandemic, and so we may be showing a shortfall there on those two on the blue building on the side of the highway and the red one on the south, unless somebody comes and opens those establishments, so. Page number ten shows the revenues collected for the landfill. We sent a check for twenty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty, and that's where you see the zero on the jail and jail telephone, six thousand plus sixteen, seventy-eight, jail bond fees, three thousand, thirty-two, and jail office fees, two hundred and fifty. The EMS department deposited fifty-five thousand, eight sixty-two, fifty-nine. And then you have the running code. The following page shows the deposits by our JP's. JP number one deposited ten thousand, seven thirteen eleven. We did receive the monies for JP number two on time, so we did include it, because it didn't come in on the month of April, we put that next month. JP number three, four thousand, six ninety-eight point eight-five. JP number four, one thousand, seven thirty-four point one two. And we have running tools on the column. And the last report is just the overtime, which was for the waterworks and wastewater treatment. And that's the end.
Motion, and also second, Commissioner Gassa to approve Treasury report represented, although in pairs, the ayes, motion carried. Item number eight is approval of checks issued. We have checks from four twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two through five, five, twenty twenty-two, for a total of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and three cents.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gassa to approve second by Commissioner Solis, although in pairs, the ayes, motion carried. Item number nine is the tax collector collectors, the front level report, the Mendoza our tax collector. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Morning, Mendoza, morning.
Okay, for the for the month of April, we're still going pretty well. Collections have been pretty steady. In the general fund, we had for the current collection was seventy thousand, six eighty point ninety-eight. The delinquent collection was thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-two point seventy-nine. Penalty and interest, thirty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two point oh one. Refund, two thousand, ninety-two fifty-seven. And the interest and sinking, we had current twenty-nine thousand, forty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Delinquent was fourteen thousand, five twenty-seven thirty-eight. Penalty and interest, eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-three point sixty-nine. Refund, seventy-one sixty-two. From the market, eighty-nine cents. Delinquent, four point forty. Penalty and interest, six point seventy-four. Refunds, we normally do when it gets less than five dollars.
Oh, that that fund is so so minimal. We keep it on the books, but.
It's still there.
Yes.
Special road bridge, we had for my current collection of seven thousand, seven hundred and sixteen point eleven. Delinquent, we had four thousand, eleven and point thirty-eight. Penalty and interest, three thousand, sixty-two point twenty-one. Refunds, we had two hundred and twenty-nine point fifty-seven. We paid out to the delinquent attorneys, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one point forty-one, for a total of collections of two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine point fifty. In other fees and collections, we had alcohol beverage, sixty dollars, tax certificates, eight dollars, hotel motel tax, nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-one. Pockets and faxes was sixty dollars, and interest earnings was twenty-three point fifty-three. Other fees and collections totaling was nine thousand, two fifty-one seventy-four. Total collection for the month was two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and twenty-one point twenty-four. For our hotel, our current collection is eighty-seven point forty-five. Last year at this time was eighty-five point seventy-five, so we can keep going on. Hotel hotel, we have year to date, ninety-one thousand, six hundred and ninety point sixteen. And I do want to say that the clerk could be hired for those assistance program. She's really, you know, on top of almost all of the applications, you know, we'll call the people, we'll ask them if they've gotten any emails requesting more information. I mean, and once, you know, once we get everything in there, pretty much, it's it's.
Do you know how many applicants we had, Mendoza?
I think the judge had four with Roxy, and then we've had about twenty-seven. I know that the library has not, yes.
I don't really know that the library, I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, they, we put up a flyer and everything, but they said that nobody could come in. But at least maybe they can, you know, at least see the flyer and come back.
Okay.
But, yeah.
That's good.
Thank you.
We'll move on to reports of presentation. Item number ten is an update on the twenty-twenty-one tax, CTIF paving notice to proceed. The acronym for CTIF, is Nelly, do you know that what that stands for? Okay. Well, anyway, it's the tax tax paving program where we we applied, and they have counties throughout the state. Our allotment was a little over two hundred thousand dollars for the four precinct commissioners, and I think we've gotten the notice to proceed on it. I think all the projects have been selected by the commissioners. I think I think for three precincts, it does entail, I guess, prep work on the streets. I think we're going to have to mill the streets and and prepare them, and then you all want to select which street goes first, or, and I think there's one precinct that has, we're going to have to hire outside contractors.
Yes, it's a curb and gutter.
Curb and gutter, yes. But the other, the other three projects will be done, like with county crews, so we need to select how we can consolidate the crews to start working and and doing the prep work, I guess, and then try to get a machine to to pave it once once we.
Which is an obvious action, which one's that, is that which?
Oh, I see which one's that, okay, there you go. Good to see which one's that, I can see in the audience.
Good morning, Judge, please. On the projects, the, I spoke to the county, the works director, and he mentioned that there's, we do need to have, we need to rent the paving machine. We do have the milling machine, our pneumatic rotor, which is the one, not the steel wheel, but the one that has the rubberized tires. There's possibly maybe three or four tires that need to be replaced on it.
I really have them.
Perfect, okay. So then they need to be, it gets installed. He did mention that he had them, but they had to get them installed, make sure that those were good.
That's all good.
And then then he said, you know, how how we would get, maybe form a crew, a paving crew, because, you know, we need to get, I guess, maybe one or two people from each.
Yeah, we usually all contribute and one here.
That way we can get, we can get.
Yeah, so let's do all the.
We do the milling. We we're on precinct four, we have a second street that we're going to be milling, and then resetting that, those millings, once we've scarified the asphalt and the base, we're going to reset that, and then put in a a pipe coat over it.
Okay.
And then we'll come and pave it. The other one is precinct two, we have from the elementary school, just east of the elementary school, going eastward to, I think it was sixteen street, either third street or sixteen.
You know, what is it, it'd be tenth street to thirteenth street.
Yes, ten, ten to thirteen, right. So then we're gonna, it'll be the same thing. We're gonna mill that up and then reset it a month.
So, yeah, the Commissioner has a quote on some of the machines, the rental machine. Our paving machine has been out of condition for a while. We can make it work, but it's the Commissioner don't trust it to to function and be able to finish the project, and we'd hate to be stuck with some asphalt that just getting cold now and turning to rock.
It absorbs a lot of material.
So I think we'd rather go with with a rental. But I would suggest we we do all the prep work first and then get the rental.
We do have prep work also on precinct three, where we would have to, there is no asphalt there to nail. We would have to set up the base and put the pipe coat on it. So once we have those three set up, we're.
We'd rather rent them.
How soon can we start bidding out the project for precinct one, Mr. O'Toole?
Um, we need to do, we do need to go do a a land survey or topographical survey on that on that particular street, so that there is, all of the homes on the west side of the street, they're much lower than the streets. We need to then determine if, on some of them, we'll put a small grade inlet or something to capture that water that's going to now be channelized within our streets. It currently goes west, but once we put some curbs and gutters, it's going to, you know, concentrate it to certain spots.
Channeling all the way to first street?
It is possible. No, we would have to put in some small inlets in certain spots. And just, there.
And the property owners are not going to be happy about channeling the water to their lot?
If we can make it an improvement, I think.
Okay, yeah, well, we'll see how.
See if we can.
The Russian have been wanting curb and gutter.
Okay.
Yeah, so so I think if we'll have to.
I think there's a few in the lots, maybe we can get one of the to help us out with that.
Yeah, to to be able to get water from the street to the.
Yeah, there's going to be, there's some lots here that are undeveloped, and I think we've got problems in the past with those kind of projects where the water now, with when you stock curb and gutters, channel to one specific area instead of free flow.
Yeah.
And and I guess one lot owner might be the unlucky one.
Right. So if we, so that that's why we would have to carefully get a get a topographical assessment.
And then try to get an easement from that.
Get an easement from that owner, so that. Get an easement from that owner so that we, uh, improve his conditions like, like the other.
Not yet, okay.
So, so it won't be, uh, it won't, we won't be able to go right away. There, the ones for, um, the ones that we're doing milling, we can start milling right away through these nerve crews. On that one, we're gonna contract it out, so we'll have to prepare a set of plans and specs, and then once we.
And on that study, what timeline are we looking at for, for that study?
Uh, it will take probably about, mm, I would say, not more than maybe, uh, two months. And, and then we would have, we just, we will have to coordinate with the landowners, and, um, I guess, what, that's a fair estimate.
Okay, I, I guess we can get started on that as soon as possible, so.
Yes, we, we'll, we'll get started right away, and we want to proceed it. And, uh, the ones that we can proceed, we'll start on the, on the surveying on that, and on the other ones, we'll start the milling. We will, um, we're close towards the end of that school year. We'll look closely also to, uh.
Ms. Mendoza, I was just gonna say that, let's try to see if we can do it after school. After school, so that way, sign-on, we have quotas of very, very, uh.
We do start prepping, uh, Second Street and, uh, and Pelican. And then, uh, as soon as the school terminates towards the end of this month, then we can start on, uh, tenth or maybe thirteenth.
Okay, yeah, so you're doing Pelican, what, from where, Commissioner?
Pelican from, uh, Pro Street to, uh, Lake Drive.
Okay, so you're gonna finish that one street.
So is that a, an overlay, Commissioner, to complete, you know?
No, that's a complete.
They take them, you know.
That's great.
There's a remainder from the CDBG projects at the court, at, uh, previously, and we head down to, uh, Pro Street.
Thank you, Ms. Mendoza.
Take your dress, ma'am.
Thank you.
There's no action on this one?
No, Commissioner, I just wanted to kinda get a sense of, uh, which direction I wanted to go on, uh, so we'll start prepping, I guess, uh, Pelican and, and Second.
Yeah, Second Street.
Those will be the first two, and then we'll prep, uh.
Yeah, that's, make sure that it's before.
After, okay, and then we, once we're ready, we can rent the machine, we'll come back, uh, to court and put an item to rent, rent the machine.
You know, the fixing the tires, I already bought a tire, and you all just do that for changing a tire.
Okay, very good.
Between you and, uh.
Yeah, no problem, yeah, okay, that's good. Uh, we'll move on to item number eleven, is a presentation for Board of Colonia's Housing Rehab Program for Neighbor Works Laredo, and we have Ms. Elizabeth Cabello here. Good morning, ma'am, thank you for, for waiting for us.
I think he just went to sleep, so.
It, yeah.
They should go back on.
Okay, all right, well, good morning.
Good morning.
Judge, Commissioners, and all, everybody here present, thank you very much for having Neighbor Works Laredo. I am Elizabeth Alonso Villarreal, the CEO for Neighbor Works Laredo. And with me, I have one of my board members, Mr. Jesusino Moza.
Good morning, Ms. Mendoza.
And, uh, our construction manager, Sanz Reyes.
Good morning, Reyes.
Reyes is going to be the one that's gonna be working more than me on, on this project. But what we wanted to do, I know, uh, you know, we, we came a few weeks ago to announce, uh, the earmark that Congressman Poya has, uh, brought to us for both, um, Webb and County, uh, Webb County and Zapata. So we're very looking forward to working here, and we've been wanting to reach out to Zapata for quite a while, and, and now is the time, and it's not just the, that's very important, and, and I'll get to that right now, but what I would like to do, if, if I'm allowed, is to give you some information on what, actually what Neighbor Works does.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, no, take all the time you need.
And how, and how we can bring these services here to Zapata, okay? So again, thank you, uh, we got one of the pictures from when we, uh.
Someone's looking around here.
Yeah. So who are we? Neighbor Works Laredo, uh, for those in Laredo know us as NHS. Was, it, we were established in nineteen ninety-one, and it was to strengthen and revitalize Laredo neighborhoods and the community. And as we're, you know, doing now, we're reaching out, out of our community, uh, to reach out to Zapata, so that it is in our strategic plan, it's in their service area, so we're very happy to be here. We are governed by a board of directors, we have twelve. And our focus is homeownership. But also whether it's rentals, uh, whether it's, uh, buying, whether it's foreclosure, because there's been a lot of foreclosures, and, you know, we're here to help. We already have certified counseling agency, which means our counseling is absolutely free, especially to low and moderate, it's actually to everybody. But, uh, for example, our home buyer education classes, well, we do have to charge something just to, you know, cover a few of our expenses, but we rely heavily on rental properties in order to sustain our organization. But our primary focus is, is home, homeownership. We are rated exemplary in Neighbor Works America, and, and you might be saying, well, what does that mean, what to us? It's, it means a lot because, you know, there's two hundred and forty-seven other organizations in the United States, and every year, we, we are reviewed to see if we're in compliance, to see if we're doing everything that we're supposed to do, by the book and everything, so we're very happy that for the last four years, we've been rated exemplary, and we intend to keep that rating, because, um, service to the community is very important. So, uh, again, we thank, we thank for allowing us to be here. So our mission is to provide and develop affordable housing opportunities, financial education, lending opportunities, promoting and preserving homeownership through counseling. Our vision is empowering individuals and families to fulfill the American dream through education and counseling with available resources and partnerships. And now we're focusing on weatherization, we have us, we have announced. This is my staff, uh, these are, and, and we can give you a copy of this, you know, for, for you, I don't wanna read every, every single detail. Uh, I don't know, is this connected to the internet? Yes, it is?
Yes.
So if I just click on this?
Does it get skip key, and then, uh, on the desktop, just for Internet Explorer?
The Google?
Blue Chrome should work as well.
Jesse, my sister is pledged to.
So let me do this. Here we are. My name is Elizabeth Alonso Villarreal, and I am the CEO of Neighbor Works Laredo. We are going on twenty-eight years of being here, serving the community. We are a non-profit charitable organization. And what I'd like to tell everybody is that we are the only head-up program agency in this city which offers education, counseling services completely free. It's very important that we all work together so we can help our clients attain their dream.
Hi, my name is Patricia Ayala. My name is Elizabeth Alonso Villarreal, and I am the CEO of Neighbor Works Laredo. We are going on twenty-eight years of being here, serving the community. We are a non-profit charitable organization. And what I'd like to tell everybody is that we are the only head-up agency in this city offering education and counseling services completely free. But it's very important that we all work together so we can help our clients attain their dream.
Hi, my name is Patricia Ayala, and I'm the Housing Counselor. One of the things that I do is help the clients in the buying process. We also do the credit coaching, financial management, and we also do foreclosure prevention. So let's talk about Home Buyer One-O-One. We're gonna teach you the process of buying a home from the beginning, all the way to the end, until you find your dream home. Credit is one of the big. Biggest issues in the home buying.
This isn't mine, I don't want to spoil it.
We can just leave you the, the link, and then you all can certainly just, you know, find us, and we can tell you everything that you do.
No problem.
We can go back to that. Okay, so we were here, okay. So we have had certified counseling, um, staff on board, Ms. Patricia Ayala and Ms. Claudia Ruelas. And, uh, they work very well with, with everyone in, in everything, in whether it's rental, counseling, mortgage, uh, home buyer education, so, uh, they, they do great. Our board of directors, our president is Ms. Flor Mozales, our vice president, Mary Gisela Leclamente, our board secretary, Davia Lopez, and our treasurer is Inés Gutierrez, so, so we also have, uh, twelve board members who do a lot of great work, uh, with us in the community. You may know Sama, though.
I, yes, I know one, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so our lines of business is in-person and online home buyer, foreclosure prevention, classes and counseling, credit improvement programs. I know that credit is one of the biggest factors for either applying for a home and, uh, renting somewhere, getting a car, you know, credit is very important. I can tell you, there's a lot of companies out there that charge an arm and a leg, uh, thousands of dollars to repair your credit. You can repair your credit overnight. If they're telling you that, then I don't know what, what they're saying, but it's not true. It takes a while, okay? So we have a program that's a hundred and fifty dollars for nine months. So we'll pull your, your credit a soft pull, because a, a hard pull credit is gonna affect your, your credit score. And, and we, we develop a, a, a plan, individualized, uh, to see where the person, what their goals are. Might not be a house, maybe it's, uh, renting, maybe it's a vehicle, may, you know, whatever the case might be. We're there to provide them with an action plan, and we check on them every other month. And by the time, like, months comes around, if they follow everything that the counselor told them, uh, in the action plan, their credit score should be pulling up.
That's good.
Yes, and, uh, we'll also help folks, if there's anything that is on their credit file that needs to be contested, we'll help them with letters, and, you know, and even if they don't have the a hundred and fifty, there's folks that, you know, can't afford, write up grant, they'll work with them, okay? Uh, homeownership counseling, and that's pre and post-purchase. Uh, I know, you know, once you get the house, we say, okay, great, you know, but now what? Do you know that you need to be setting aside some money for that roof that eventually is gonna have to be replaced or other things? So, uh, we also provide the post-purchasing, okay? We have rental operators, I mentioned before, that in order for us to sustain our organization, we need to collect fees from, fees from somewhere. So we have, uh, affordable rentals in our, in our inventory. Uh, we're now doing lending, and, and, and I do wanna talk to that, uh, talk to you about that, about the benefit that will serve your employees. Uh, we have a program that lends up to a thousand dollars. It's to combat these payday loans, uh, companies. Uh, we ask for no collateral, no credit. You need to be employed twelve months at your job, Zapata County, and, uh, the, the payment must be payroll deducted. Those are the only three requirements.
And, and the interest from, from?
The interest is eighteen percent. You go to a payday loan, you're talking about six hundred and sixty-four percent. And if you put down your television, your TV, and if you miss the payments, or, you know, they're gonna come after you to collect, they're gonna take that.
That, that's a very possible good benefit for our employees.
It is, and I hope that I can speak to you more with that. I don't know if it would be with, uh, treasurer, or with HR, the attorney.
I think both, yeah.
Yes, so, uh, if we can set up a meeting, you know, we can certainly discuss that, but it's a benefit. And, and these, these payments, um, they, they are, they're free year. So it's, you know, every two weeks, I don't know when, when you all get paid, but it's, it's every two weeks, so, you know, employees can be paying that through payroll deduction. So, and they don't have to leave, they don't have to ask to go to Laredo and apply, everything is done online. Uh, the system is to where if you're applying, uh, HR or the treasurer's office or whoever is designated will get a notification to confirm that the employee has been here for a year. They click certify that yes, it goes back, and it goes back to the employee. They then get, uh, the paperwork, the agreement, and they sign up for it. And it could be, it's left, you know, forty-eight hours, sometimes it's twenty-four hours. They'll have the funds in their checking account, so. And once an employee leaves, you are not responsible for that, that's where we come in. Okay, so this is a good, um, benefit that you can, uh, offer your, your employees. We have an annual home parent expo in Laredo, uh, every March. Uh, we just had one recently after the pandemic that we weren't able to. So we invite you every year to attend. It's not just for home buying, it's for, um, either you're looking for insurance, you're looking for, uh, rehabbing. You know, there's a lot of services that are offered, and it's for children, public. We're doing the construction and weatherization, uh, program. We currently are doing weatherization in Laredo through another funding source. And, uh, that's where we applied for this funding source that we're gonna be talking about in a, in a few moments. And basically, uh, the program that we're, we're working with right now is replacing ASIC units. Installing, uh, uh, not, not the roof, but the insulation. So, I, and those, those requirements are, they're, it, it is income-based, and, um, it's, it's for homeowners. If, if it, if it's a rental, as long as the homeowner agrees, you know, we, we can go ahead and do that. The, the requirements are a little bit more lenient than the others that I'm gonna talk to about, because as you know, with CDBG, there's, there's a lot of, uh, factors that come into that. But, you know, we're certainly here to, to work on that. We are offering the rental and mortgage assistance. I know, I, I believe the, the, uh, there was the property taxes that some folks have been applying for.
Right.
Uh, if you have folks that need assistance, that we can do a phone or through Zoom, or folks can't go to Laredo, we're more than happy to help them.
With the application.
Free of charge, right. And, um, you know, as long as they provide everything, and we can be on Zoom at the same time and, and answering the questions, we can do that. So it's not just for that, it's also for mortgage assistance. I don't know if, uh, if you've been experiencing some issues where, because, and it's pandemic-related. So let's say, uh, a year ago or two, you were laid off, uh, or maybe one person, there was a, there was two in the family, and one died laid off, and now came back to work. You know, it's very difficult sometimes, you know,
To be part of all things.
To, to catch up to everything, so that can be demonstrated, um, the mortgage assistance is possible through the state. Uh, you can apply directly, or you can apply through us. And again, what, the only thing we're doing is we're helping everybody apply for these, uh, funds, and, uh, money is being paid out in Laredo. Uh, not only for that, uh, but the, 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 the taxes, as her collector called me. She was in one of the meetings where we were gonna start offering this, and she said, you know, they're already paying, you know, the back taxes. So, uh, that is something that we're, we can do, we can help, and, um, you just need to, um, we can, I, I brought, actually, brought some rochers, we're gonna leave here so you can distribute. We're gonna leave here so you can distribute.
I think, as I said, I don't know if you need additional help for this, but it's certainly
Additional help?
For the delinquent tax, they're doing, they're offering that type of service also.
Oh, okay. Took a lot of the applications, because sometimes, you know, not everybody can, or they don't have access to a computer, or
And that's what's happening, yeah.
It's kind of technical of where you have to upload it, get a copy, upload it, and then send it. And then they request it several times. So you have to just keep sending what they're asking for. So, but, yes?
We offer those services too, if you need additional help.
If you need additional help, or, I mean, it could be too where if we can coordinate and have the counselors be here a certain date, maybe that could be, but we would need to talk more about that, so that we can make sure that we bring in the proper equipment. So in homebuying, why is it important, why a counselor? Okay, are you ready to buy a home? I mean, I know years and years ago, yes, I wanted that perfect home, but is it something that we can really afford, you know? So the counselor evaluates the needs and the wants, you know, what you can afford, you know, what's out there. Understanding credit, the counselors also talk to the clients about that. If they qualify for a mortgage loan. If they don't qualify for a mortgage loan, it's okay, we'll get them ready for that, because it's better to just wait a little while longer and make sure that you are a successful new homeowner. There's down payment assistance. I know in Laredo, it's a separate funding source, but I understand here in Zapata, there's some other sources, T-Shark or through the rural, so that is also available. And so after you purchase, now what? You know, you need to protect your investment. You need to make sure that, you know, like I had mentioned earlier, you set aside some monies in order to be prepared for the future. So the counselor explains the pros and the cons, the overview of the home purchase, the budgeting, managing their money, affordability, understanding their credit, and preserving their home. The counselors go over the capital, capacity, credit, and collaterals that are very important for homeownership. And again, if the client isn't ready, we'll get them ready for you with an action plan. Foreclosure prevention. I mentioned that we've saved about four hundred and fifty families from foreclosure, absolutely free. We don't charge. They're already in a situation that, you know, they're fixing to lose their home. And so we're here to help. Our counselors will meet and assess the situation. She will explain the steps. One thing that we ask for our clients, and we reiterate it, is that once our counselors start talking to the lenders, it's very important that if the counselor asks for certain documents, it needs to be sent, because if not, it'll just, you know, the foreclosure will continue. But like I mentioned, we've saved over four hundred and fifty homes, so our counselors know what they're doing. These are just some of the things that our counselors do. And studies show that clients who work with our specialists are twice as likely to cure delinquency and three times more likely to receive a modification here. So I know we have Patty that, you know, the lenders have said no, but she's persistent. You know, she can demonstrate, and she's been successful. So we have very passionate counselors who really want people to stay in their homes. And now we have the mortgage and property taxes assistance, which is the same programs that you all are accessing, which is free.
Yes.
And we wanna get the word out, because there's only going to be a certain timeframe. What happens to that money, it goes back, and it's, you know, it's for something else.
Yeah, we did notify all the taxpayers that needed some help, so hopefully it'll keep coming in.
Exactly, so let's try to help everybody who really doesn't need.
One of those taxpayers that actually made an application and it was denied. Is there another step? I know that they told me maybe I could call, and
Our counselors have called because of something that was either not acceptable or something. I would recommend that you contact us. And we don't know why, we have to find out why, maybe because they do have some criteria on approving. They didn't meet it, then that's probably why, but sometimes it's just a matter of communication. And, you know, we can have one of our counselors call. And I'm leaving the business parts also for the counselors, so that you all can use them.
Very good.
Our objective now is to be here in Zapata. I don't know if you all have a lot of homebuying, I don't know how much, you know, construction there is for homeownership.
I think we've seen homes doing up.
They're going up.
There is a market.
There.
Great.
Yes.
So we'd love to come and host a homebuyer education class. It's an all-day thing. So if we can get at least a minimum of ten, fifteen, that would be willing to learn everything, what it takes to homebuy and how to, you know, sustain your home afterwards, and all the responsibilities. We can certainly come over. We normally have them on a Saturday in Laredo, but we can come by any day.
Okay, we'll work with you on that, if we have some interest.
Online classes are also available for those who have accessibility, and they're both in English and Spanish. That's the address, but like I said, I'll give you copies of all this. Okay, so the rental and mortgage, again, it keeps on popping up, because we want to get those funds out. As far as rental, the rental program we're working with doesn't apply to Zapata, it's only in Wood County. I don't know if there's any other rental assistance that you all have here. I know the state had it at one point, but money just, you know.
Well, I think we have some assistance, I guess, with some of the water, the liquid water that some of our customers have. But mental assistance, I'm not aware that we're participating in.
Okay, so, and our future clients are to become a CDFIs. For those of you who might wonder, what's a CDFI? It's pretty much like a bank. We have folks that go and try to get a loan to be a homeowner or a business. And because the banks have criteria that they're regulated by, you know, sometimes they might be off by a few points on their credit, or, I don't know, the collateral, you know, maybe what the amount. But the CDFI comes in to offer, you know, more equitable opportunities to everybody. Yes, you might have a credit score that's five points below, but if you come into counseling, you know, establish a plan, then we can help you. But that is in the near future. It'll probably be another two years by the time, because the Treasury has you do a few steps before getting to become a CDFI. We do want, with being a CDFI, we would then be a one-stop shop. You come and get your education, you come and get counseling.
Come and join.
We're doing construction now, and so now, you know, get a loan with us, so, yeah.
I mean, yes.
That is what we wanna do, is a non-stop, as a one-stop shop. So since nineteen ninety-five, we've created three thousand six hundred and twenty-eight new homeowners, educated and counseled eleven thousand four hundred and forty-one. We've created a community investment of three hundred and sixty-six million dollars, so that's a lot.
Very impressive, yeah.
Yes, and, okay, I mentioned four fifty, it's actually four ninety-two families that we've helped preserve their homes. Our online classes are ninety-nine dollars, in-person is fifty, couples seventy-five. Cost of counseling is absolutely free. So let's talk about the weatherization, the rehab here in Zapata.
And you can spend a million dollars here in Zapata County.
So I've been in contact with HUD representative, and as you know, he came and announced that the money is coming. So what do we do in the meantime? So they told us it's a six-month process. So what we're here to do today is to ask if we can set aside a day so that we can come and do an assessment in the community. We are waiting for HUD's criteria, what is gonna be included, you know, the do's and the don'ts through CDPG. We don't know if there's gonna be environmentals that are gonna be requested. We heard a lot that day of the presentation, and we wanted to see if we can come and explore the area. You all are the ones who know your community, you all are the ones who know where there's the most need. So I know in weatherization, what does that mean? Well, it could be replacing, you know, your AC units. It could be installing other weatherization features, you know, the windows.
So where those doors installation?
These are all things that fall into this.
How about siding, or?
We just need to wait for HUD to, they're going to provide us with the toolkit to determine what is available. I know we had mentioned that we'd like to put, install some ramps, ramp bars, things like that, that, you know, a lot of folks need.
That would be very good.
So what we are asking is if we can set aside a good day, and we were talking about when it would be good. I know our May month is just, you know, it's all filled up, but anytime in June, just let us know, you know, we can come and spend the whole day here, you know, driving to locations, whether it's here in town or the surrounding communities.
So basically by driving, so just tour our community?
Well, but we'd like to stop and talk, you know, to some homeowners to see, you know, what the needs are. I don't know if you have already something that you all know, that, you know, you have.
Well, there's quite a few folks that have come in for those applications through USDA, so certainly we could, and I don't know if all of them have been funded, or very few, or how many, but certainly there is at least a homeowner that has sought help already, so
Or come and have the elections.
We can certainly revisit, revisit those applications.
Okay, and maybe, you know, kind of arrival, these folks need ramps, these folks need a site, these folks need
Big roofs, a lot of them.
Big roofs, yes, I heard a lot about the roofs.
Yeah.
So we'll see what we can do in, you know, in that regard. But we would like to come by and visit with you all.
Okay.
I don't know if you have a community center that, you know, you have place that intakes, you know, I guess, you know, those are the places, you know, the folks that we can talk to, to make more decisions.
And we'll certainly get the word out, and sound, and make sure, and visit with our constituents, and, yes, we'll try to get some good participation.
And as soon as we have the toolkit and the requirements of what we need to do, you know, what the criteria is, we wanna come here.
Well, maybe we should wait until then.
It's up to you. We needed to just get
See who qualifies, and
Right, because we hate to come and say, we have candy, and, you know, not everybody's gonna get, you know, because we also have to go by what CDPG funds are.
Okay, I think that'd be important for us to wait to technically see what qualifications are, who qualifies, who doesn't, and then we can get the word out.
Then we can say, okay, this is, we can either run some flyers, or I know that in the conversations, HUD didn't want us to do some kind of an assessment, but maybe, like you mentioned, you already have some interest, some applications. Well, maybe if you can share that with me, and it can be, you know, a two, three-page report to where we can get, and so we know what the needs are.
Okay.
And I know the needs are many, you know, we've seen them everywhere.
Yes.
And we're just gonna try to get to as many folks as we can.
Okay.
Six months, we wanted to assess, right? Okay, so I'm gonna do that instead.
Okay.
And maybe, and I'm in communication with them, so I'm not gonna wait two months. I, you know, I'm contacting them, I'm gonna be emailing them, I mean, anything else? Is there something else you can give me in the meantime? That way we know, and we can make sure that we can help.
We'll structure that information with this, and then we'll
Exactly.
And go after the folks, yes.
I mentioned the personal loans to your staff. I'm not gonna put YouTube on again, because it's not gonna work here, but basically, it's right there. Payroll deduction, no collateral, no prepayment penalties, money is deposited into the employers, into the employees' checking account.
And this is available to the general public that have
Well, the lending is only employer
I know, but the general public, that they say somebody works for a company.
The company can call us, and we can assess. And if it's something that, you know, we can work with that company, then
Certainly, it won't be just limited to public.
Oh, no, 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 yeah, no. Maybe you have some clinics, you know, maybe, I don't know. You know, you're a little bit more over here, but it's something that's available, okay?
So this is the number that they can call?
Yes, the nine five six seven one two nine. Your employees, I have the information here. They can access, but they're not gonna get anywhere, because we have to approve the employer, so that the employer is ready to be checking their employment history, and, you know, will be, will be payroll deducted. So they can go to the site that they can
It has to come from the
Yeah, once we have, you know, the county open, then, you know, the employees can apply. Or any other employer, yes.
But this is the number for everything?
Oh, for everything, yes.
For the counseling and all that?
Everything.
And once they call to this number, will there be somebody answering the phone, or they have to go through a prompt and?
Oh, I hate that. The one thing that I always said there, and the board knows it, is like, if somebody isn't answering the phone, I mean, I serve as a board member and other, and I'm not gonna mention where, but just to talk to somebody really quick, I have to wait about two minutes and wait until I get to that. But no, somebody always answers the phone. Only time they're not gonna answer is after business hours, but we leave on the reporter, okay? Does anybody have any questions?
We look forward to qualifying and helping our residents here.
Yes.
So I guess we'll be in communication the next few months and see what the program entails.
Yeah, so we can get started, and, you know, hopefully, you know, we wanna start this year.
Yes.
Because, I mean, I believe we also have a certain timeline for spending that money, and we wanna make sure we spend it so that we can get considered for something else.
For the students also, for the financial, for the students.
Well, yeah, and we can do even, we can even do it from the schools. I mean, we have done that at Tabi U to where, for an hour, our counselors provide them with financial tools, you know, now that you're graduating, credit cards are gonna be like, here, you're approved, so now what? You know, you need to take care of your credit, so we teach students that too. So we're more than happy to be able to present that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
We'll keep in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And where do I need all this information?
We can leave
Can I just leave it here?
Yes.
There's pens, and brochures, and everything, I'm just gonna leave this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much, thank you, thanks, sir. We all have to share to have the floor, there's a presentation on another acronym, I'm not sure, MHP Salud. Ms. Elizabeth Erica Sanchez, yes. Oh, good morning, Ms. Sanchez.
I have actually brought a small presentation. I shortened it a lot, it's actually very long. I don't know if I can use my laptop for that.
Thank you, yes.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Sure, my
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, thank you so much for coming.
Sorry, our presentation is a little bit long, so I tried to shorten it to make it, you know, straight to the point.
Okay.
I don't wanna confuse anybody more than I have to. Okay.
Well, I know that in the past, one of my coworkers actually came by to, you know, present our services. First of all, my name is Erica Sanchez, once again. I'm a community health worker and a navigator certified by CMS, which is a center for Medicare and Medicaid services.
Okay.
We provide free application assistance for the health insurance marketplace, also known, or better known in the community as the Obamacare. We try not to refer to it as by that name, because it's actually evolved a lot. It's made a lot of changes to the program. It's actually been a lot better for the community now. There's been a lot of families, individuals that have been able to, you know, benefit from this program. And we also, not only that, but we also do free application assistance for state benefits, such as Medicaid, CHIP, children's children's CHIP, the uh CHIP per Nato, which is a one, per nato woman, um the Medicare Savings Program, which is a Medicaid benefit for Medicare beneficiaries. And the reason why I'm here today is because, uh like I said, I, I know that previously there, there had been, one of my coworkers came by. There were some organizational changes, so now I'm going to be the one that's gonna be taking care of uh Zapata County. We actually cover seven counties around the area, which are include Webb, Zapata, Gemah, Duval, Jimwells, uh McMullen and LaSalle County. So I, I was the only one for the past two months covering all seven counties. I wasn't very active here in Zapata, but since we already have two other uh community health workers that just began their training on Monday last week, um I will be able to focus more of my attention into Zapata and Webb, so you will be seeing a lot more of me.
And maybe can you say for, what Ms. Sanchez?
I'm sorry?
Uh the acronym, I heard.
We really don't use the acronym, acronym anymore. I want to, you know, not answer the question, but before, uh the MHP was actually very active with migrants. So uh it, it has to do with the specific, yeah.
Yeah, for instance, yeah, okay.
But we no longer serve only migrants, so we serve all of the Hispanic and Latino communities. Um again, and the most important part of our, in our program is that all the services are completely free of charge.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, I just.
So I, I'm just trying to look for the present.
F one.
F five?
F one.
Thank you, uh yes, okay. Thank you. Well, you might be asking yourselves what the Navigator program is. The Navigator, the Navigator program actually helps consumers submit a marketplace application for health insurance coverage, as I previously mentioned, and financial assistance. It provides application assistance for Medicaid and the CHIP through the marketplace. Um now, I want to hold a little bit on this one because it doesn't have to be necessarily through the marketplace as well. Uh Marketplace has an open enrollment period, as everybody knows, from November first all the way through, well, this year it actually ran through January fifteenth, which it obviously closed for a while. The Medicaid and CHIP, tho- those are applications that can be submitted at any time dur- during the year and we can help with that. Now, um it al- it also clarifies distinction, distinctions among coverages types, including the QHPs, Medicaid, CHIP. We provide information in both English and Spanish. We offer virtual and in-person appointments in, oh, I'm sorry, I completely forgot to switch these counties. This is the, I turned the ver- the version for, for San Antonio as well because we actually, MHP actually covers sixty-three counties along the Rio Grande River, from the valley all the way to El Paso. These are actually the counties from uh Barack County, which is San Antonio, the San Antonio area, but like I mentioned, I cover myself Zapata, uh Duval, Gemah, Jimwells, uh Webb, LaSalle and McMullen. So now the navigators, we are CMS certified, we all are. We have to go through the certification before we can start providing the, the application assistance. And most importantly, like I mentioned before, all the navigator services are coming, to be free of charge to the community. Now, the reason why I'm here today is because for twenty twenty-two, uh because of the whole pandemic, they opened up a special enrollment period for certain consumers or certain uh families and individuals that fall within a specific income guideline, which is the hundred to the a hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level. Now, normally outside of the open enrollment period for, in order to qualify and be able to enroll outside of that period, you have to have a special qualifying event or life changes, as we normally call them. Losing coverage, um adoption, having a baby, getting married, getting divorced. You know, it had to be something specific. Now, for twenty twenty-two, and this is gonna run throughout the entire year of twenty twenty-two, um as long as they fall within that specific income guideline, which is the a hundred and fifty, to the a hundred to the a hundred and fifty percent, most consumers will be able to enroll at very, very affordable prices through the health insurance. Now, we do have mixed families where mom and dad are with the marketplace and let's say the um children don't qualify for, for the marketplace, so that's a separate application for Medicaid. And we can do everything within one single appointment. So that's a good thing, that we can set up the appointment, do um everything in one single trip. Now, I did speak to Ms. um, Monique, sorry, and she offered the, one of the offices here to be able to come in a specific date of the, of the month. And I was, I was mentioning to her that I can definitely be here uh the first and the fourth Monday of every month, with the exception of May because of the training that we're having, um May would be next week, next Tuesday, I'm sorry, not Mondays, Tuesdays. And then after that, starting June, I can be here the first and the fourth Tuesday of the month. And then after that, it would only be as needed, for example, if I, if there's a, a consumer that needs emergency assistance, right? They need the application to get done right away. I can definitely schedule something. I know that they can already approve to let me a space over at the community center as well as the library, so if the office is not available, I can definitely try to work with them somewhere else, including the community. And I can travel here to Zapata so that I can help if it's something that they don't have a problem with. Especially because of the whole situation where, you know, people are very skeptical with sharing their information over the phone. It doesn't have to be over the phone. I can travel here to the county, to the, to Zapata and assist them in person as well. So that's something that I, I will, I normally am very, very flexible with that. Um just like I said, you guys had seen me very active because of the whole thing that I was by myself with all seven counties. But from now on, you know, I will have a lot more flexibility to be coming in, in and out of Zapata more often. If there is a point where I need to be here at least once a week, I will definitely make that, that change. Now, uh who qualifies for the a hundred and fifty uh percent of the federal poverty level, SEP, which is the special enrollment period? Uh consumers who have an estimated annual household income at or below, below the a hundred and fifty percent of federal poverty level and aren't eligible for Medicaid and/or CHIP may be eligible for this special enrollment period. Consumers who qualify for this SEP may also qualify for more savings. And if you're interested in finding out if you qualify for an SEP, of course, you can schedule a virtual or in-person appointment. Now, I know the tax season is over, except that I do want to touch this, touch basis on this, on this subject in specific because I know that a lot of the consumers had to get extensions. So, you know, even though tax season is over, we're still providing assistance with getting ahold of their ten ninety-five eighties. A lot, no, all of the consumers, I'm sorry, not all, a lot. All of the consumers that had coverage through the marketplace, at the end of the year, let's say they had coverage through, for twenty twenty-one, at the beginning of twenty twenty-two, they get a form called ten eighty-five eight, which is a breakdown of exactly how much they got in credits throughout the whole year of twenty twenty-one. And they have to be able to present this to their tax preparer. If they don't, their tax returns will already get delayed, they have to, you know, they have to wait at least a minimum of eight weeks, if I'm not mistaken, once that process happens. So we try to avoid all that. We try to provide uh all the information that we can. We educate and we, you know, just, you know, go through the application and just, okay, you qualify for this or uh you didn't qualify. We give you a, a, an actual explanation, explanation, I'm sorry, as to, you know, if the person didn't qualify, why exactly it wasn't that they didn't qualify. If uh there's documentation pending, we're available for that as well after. And we're not, which takes me to this next line now, what happens post-enrollment or after the enrollment process? Well, we're still going to be available in case the consumers need to report any changes in their income, any changes in their jobs, any changes in their um household size or families. Anything that needs to be reported, we will still be available for them to be able to help them make that, uh report those changes, I'm sorry. Now, we can help them make their payments online as well or over the phone. And we can upload any pending documentation. Now, what do I, what do I mean by pending documentation? Um let's say, for example, um I get a consumer that is a permanent resident. Sometimes through the application, just by submitting the information of the permanent residence card, the system will approve it and they'll recognize it, but there's sometimes like, let's say if they're, if they're very new um as permanent residents, sometimes they're not even in the system yet, so they won't be able to verify their information. They'll request for us to send copies of their permanent resident cards. So we help them do that. We don't have, they don't have to go through the process of waiting for the letter so that they can send the documentation. We can do it right, everything right then and there during the appointment because we have access to that as well. Now, we can help them choose a primary care physician, we can help them choose, um, sorry, we can help them update their income information, we can help them understand their insurance plan. It's not just about getting people enrolled, it's about getting people educated as how important it is to have health coverage and to know how to use it properly. A lot of people think that just, you know, having health insurance is only for people that are sick, and it's not like that. I, I think of it and I try to, I try to explain it to them like this because I think of health insurance the same as you do your car insurance. You might not need it daily, but you might need it someday and you want to have it to be able to use it when needed. So that's it, that's the way that I, I normally um explain it to them and so that they can understand more, a little bit more as to why it's important. Because, you know, you're car insurance, you don't need it every day, but you want to have it just in case something happens. Now, here's my contact information, again, Erica Sanchez and my phone number is nine five six five three two five six four. They can actually go online and schedule an appointment online if they visit the website at www.mhpsalud.org slash. They can definitely schedule an appointment there, um, online and it gives, and the questions, it'll ask if they want an in-person appointment, if they want it virtual, if they want it over the phone, because we can do Zoom as well, we can use the Zoom. Uh I communicate with a lot of my consumers through WhatsApp as well, so I have that application available. If they want to message me through the application, that's completely fine. And mainly the reason why I'm here today is because, again, I want to be more present in the community so that people can actually know, especially with how long HHC has been taking on, on processing a lot of their applications. I have a lot of consumers that have been, you know, pretty persistent with presentations, they haven't called me back. Presentations, they have not given the, the interview. I haven't heard back from, from, from my caseworker. So normally we try to keep up with, uh following up with those applications and with those, uh with those benefits to make sure that, you know, they get renewed on time or once we do the application that it does get processed. Unfortunately, I don't know if it's the application load that they have, that they're having, but unfortunately, we've had a lot of consumers that submit the application and then stay there for like forty-five, sixty days and nobody's working. So that's where we come in, we make the calls, we help them, of course, the entire time with a consumer present with us. We can, but we can definitely advocate for them. That's the main purpose, to advocate for them, for the members of the community and make sure that they know that all of these services are available to them. Now, as well as not just the application assistance process, we also try to look for other resources within the community, which, uh, the, like, if I just finish presenting, it, it actually comes in very handy because sometimes, as she mentioned, because of the pandemic, a lot of the families lost their income, they lost their jobs and they're applying for all of these services, but they, they're also seeking for the assistance as to, you know, to not lose their home or to not be evicted when they're renting. So I think even I'm gonna contact her because it, it, it's gonna come in very handy. Um having a lot of available resources in the, in the community for us is important so that when we do get asked a question as to, do you know where and to get this help? We can, you know, at least guide them to the right direction.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez.
And really, anybody have any questions?
Well, you're very impressive, very knowledgeable on, on what you're trying to.
I, I have been, I have been working for the marketplace for a little bit over five years.
Good, it shows.
Thank you, thank you. And let me be completely honest, I am terrified of presentations.
You could have told us, I think, you did very well.
And well, if nobody has any questions, well, thank you very much for.
Well, I think, you know, like every rural community, we, we need a lot of help with these type of services.
Oh, yes, of course.
Getting information for our residents, so yes, uh we look forward to, to being able to provide this for our residents. Those who want to join the marketplace should have the ability.
Yes, and, and it's very important. I, I, I myself, I enrolled all of my family members and it's important. You need, and it, and it actually came in, I, I use it a lot as an example for my mom. My mom was, has always been the person, the type of person that, ay, para que lo quiero, if, I'm not even sick. She had an accident, she needed a surgery and I was like, que haberes para que lo quieras? So I, I use, I use my own family a lot of, uh, as an example because they are a biggest example of how important it is to have the health, health coverage. So I try to educate my consumers and, and be available for them and be present and be able to, uh, answer all of their questions. I don't like having to say, I don't know, so if I don't know, I get the answer. And, and, and I try to do it not only for myself, but for my consumers and as a community. So yes, if anybody knows of anybody that, anyone that.
And here on, here in county, our staff will be able to help you and assist to get the word out.
Yes.
That's what's running here, boy.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez, thank you. Our commissary will move on to the action items. We will deliberate. Consider action item number thirteen is to approve a memorandum of agreement between Texas A&amp;M University Health Science Center, Postal Ben Health Education Center in Zapata County to provide medication assistance services uh to the uninsured residents of Zapata County.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Mendez the second, by Commissioner Solis and, and yes, Ms. Sandra Garcia, uh, men with, with, with me and my staff, they're wanting to use, they, they only, they were requesting some office space.
I'll just, just, because I'll bring the contract and it shows A one US highway.
Yes, uh, they're with our Inogen Healthcare Director, Ms. Costa, where there, there is a smaller office that, that they will be able to, to, to use. And also they will be, uh, looking for a one employee to help them out, a local employee to help them out there. So there'll be a job opportunity for some individual. I think they'll be posting that in the newspaper. They have them already up in C. Karen, I don't know if they've actually posted that job opening, but, uh, and certainly this will be another service for our community, uh, bringing, uh, the ability to provide medications to, to the public. So, uh, we look forward to partnering with them. I guess we'll allow our county attorney to review the, the memorandum and, and it, it looks, I, I think, I read through it and that's basically what we had talked about, basically they're wanting open, uh, an office space, uh, for them to administer their program there in Zapata. We got a motion the second, although the fair say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fourteen is to desert, deserting slot number three and slot number six in Road and Bridge Department as rental truck operator positions to facilitate each precinct having its own assigned operator and equipment. Commissioner.
Uh, as we had previously discussed, we did work in two new rental trucks.
Yes.
Uh, they should be coming in probably at the end of this month, beginning of next month.
Okay.
So we do have two vacancies right now at the county shop and I thought it'd be more convenient to just hire these operators in those slots instead of having to create new positions, uh, you know, for the, the new budget.
Yes, yes, I, I think, yeah, I think we're gonna have four, uh, four of these trucks, so.
But those are the, they're circle, those are the vacancies right there.
Yes, uh.
Range six.
The only, I think the only, and well, depending on when these, uh, this equipment comes in, I think, these two positions, I think we're still paying on them even though they.
Oh, yeah.
They've retired, so we can't immediately fill.
No, we can't.
So, but, but we certainly need to have one for each precinct. I, I completely agree with that.
I'm making how you do to approve it.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Mendez the second, by Commissioner Solis, although the fair say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fifteen is to approve the San Nasio Pool Repair Invoys to Laredo Shades LLC in the amount of five thousand seven hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendez the second, by Commissioner Solis.
I guess this will come out of non-departmental.
Yeah, non-departmental, uh, building and maintenance.
Okay, yeah, I think we've got about a seventy thousand dollar overdraft.
Lily, do you know if this was due to a damage of one of the storms or?
It was, but it was the storm that hit, what was it, two years ago?
Okay, so we have, we quit, cover all the insurance, we're gonna.
There's no more money, so.
Okay. So we've got a motion second, although the fair say aye. Motion carries. Item number sixteen is to approve the purchase and payment of an auto seal machine to the trader's office. I'm just saying, as you're, you're having trouble with your.
It's for the, the machine that seals the chest, right?
I just put a, a sample of what the machine was doing to our chest, so.
Take it to the bank.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, we went ahead and placed the work because we have a stacked chest and there'd be the tri-fold that the, it comes to the machine and it folds them and it seals them, so.
So they took them out of non-departmental, so?
Well, just, uh, under supplies in, uh, general, which is, uh, we have ten thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars.
Motion to approve, carries on hand.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia the second, by Commissioner Mendez, although the fair say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eighteen is to, uh, no, seventeen is to approve the purchase of surveillance cameras for nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-two cent for the Justice of the Peace precinct one.
Judge, I had a question on this, are, is this, has this work already been done or they're requesting?
I, I don't know, that's, that's what I was gonna ask.
It's, uh, I mean, I'm looking at the invoices or their labeled invoices, I don't know, the work is already done, it's not called a quarter.
I, I, I don't know.
But I understand that it has.
It was already been done.
They had to go get back, um, let's say, in January. We had a, they had approved it back, um, let's say, uh, in January.
The court approved it?
Yeah, they have made them. Approved five thousand and some, but then they had to end up, uh, two more, but outside since.
Because this is a lot of money for that size of office.
So they approved five thousand dollars and then they spent nine thousand in health exchange?
Yes, because they added two more, but to be outside of the building.
The judge called me on that, she said she needed an extra camera, so.
And just so, so the court knows, there, there's forty-two thousand dollars in the.
This will be out of courthouse security.
Courthouse security.
I mean, or JP, whatever.
Oh, yeah, the technology fund has forty-two thousand dollars.
Judge, I'll make a motion, I mean, I pulled it out of the JP Technology Fund.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to approve, second by Commissioner Solis, any discussion? Although the fair say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And, and they have been installed and the judge did reach out to me.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, item number, uh, eighteen is to wire Cabo Gulpis, uh, slot number seven, at twelve thousand twenty-four cents an hour. As a heavy equipment operator, Zapata County Department, San Nacio landfill. Motion by Commissioner Garza II and by Commissioner Solis. And I don't see the time, I think, he's already working, uh, has been working there for a while.
He's a temp.
He's just promoted here.
He's a, he's a temp, very early.
Oh, he was a temp, okay.
Yes, because you sat on the wrong side today, Mr. Stapp. Sorry, we were agreeing on this side.
Okay, all right, we've got a motion in the second, although the fair say aye.
Judge, sorry, I, I, I wasn't here on number fifteen. Yes, just to let y'all know, they're already installed.
Okay.
The, the canopies, they're, they're, they're really nice up there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number nineteen is to approve, uh, twenty twenty-three TCDRS plan assessment and contribution rate.
The motion to approve, yes, there was a reduction in the rate, so.
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Raza. I guess, yeah, you could explain to the rest of us.
I was already gonna say, I got it from them. Uh, you've been worrying, Judge Commissioners, uh, for the plan year twenty twenty-three, we will be seeing the, at the retirement pay, plan rate will be seven point ninety-three percent. The group term night will be at point twenty-six percent, which will give us an annual contribution of twelve point nineteen percent. We were at thirteen point fifty-six percent this current year, so we will be seeing a production, uh, reduction in rates.
Pretty close to fully funded, uh, retiring, it's ever at ninety-three percent. So, uh, the fund is in good shape. So we got a motion in the second, although the fair say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty is to begin an engineering study for the purpose of water recycling from the Zapata County store plant to Zapata County water plant. Ralph, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, Ralph, uh, you were visiting, I guess, last week sometime and, and, you know, talking about, you know, our lake levels, how much silt we're bringing in from our raw, raw water intake to the water plant. The need for, uh, the Brau Pond is, is basically full of mud already because we backwash our filters on a daily basis. And we're talking, uh, and, you know, Ralph is to say, well, we are releasing close to a million gallons worth of, uh, of treated sewage water that is basically cleaner than what's, we're bringing in from the lake. And there may be a possibility of maybe looking into how we can bring that back into our, our water plant. And probably not a good discussion item to the public, but, uh, it, it is, it does make sense that it's cleaner water, it's basically coronaed water we're releasing back into the lake.
This is basically what, what, what we put back into the lake, about nine hundred thousand gallons to a policy per day, uh, treated sewage water. Or it's just, you know, if you open it up, everybody thinks they know, but it just goes like chlorine, so, you know.
So that would, and we would re-treat it again. I, I think it's worth looking into what the, you know, we, we now acquired the Gulfport, so we, we can certainly cross the Gulfport to the water line and, and bring it into, back into our system. And I think, yeah.
Do we have a price, have we looked at pricing for a study like this? So we talk about.
I don't know, I, I do know that there's certain, uh, cities in Texas that are doing this. I know there's Big Springs, Wichita Falls, and one of the largest ones is Edmondson. I think I read they treat about, these numbers were, I think, from twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, about five million gallons.
There's a lot of communities that are doing that.
It makes sense, especially with the limited amount of water we have access to.
We intake about two point eight billion to three million per day, uh, that we treat for, for water, in the water plant. So if we were to, once we recycle about nine hundred thousand, two hundred million. Uh, just because of the lake loans right now and the droughts, you know, anything, uh, would definitely help. I don't know prices, I don't know.
So, so you're asking for authorization to look for, uh, I guess consultants to do this type of study for us? So you'll bring that price to the court or?
Yes, sir.
Won't you move?
Motion by, uh, Commissioner Mendoza II and by Commissioner Raza, any discussion? Although the fair say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ralph.
You should have more ayes.
Is it the next one? Oh, yeah, okay. Item number twenty-one is to approve the hiring of Isela Chapa as clerk one, slot twenty-nine, at ten dollars an hour, effective May second, twenty twenty-two. Motion by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Mendoza. And, and this is to, you transferred somebody out or?
Yes, sir, I transferred somebody, uh, Mr. Jopena from, from the office to the sewer plant.
Oh, okay, all right. So motion, a motion in the second, although the fair say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number twenty-two is to approve the transfer of Josepeng at clerk one's, slot twenty-nine, at ten dollars an hour, to sewer plant treatment operator, trainee, slot seven, at ten dollars an hour.
Won't you move?
Effective May second, twenty twenty-two. So, okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Garza II and by Commissioner Solis. Uh, although the fair say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-three is to request two thousand dollars for the fireworks display on Monday, July the fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Mendoza II and by Commissioner Raza. Uh, two thousand dollars, I know Karen, your group has been doing this for many years now.
Yeah, anybody wanna take the job?
No, you're doing okay, you're doing okay.
Hang in there, Karen, if you can still do it another ten years in the department.
Okay.
Although the fair say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Item number twenty-four is to consider a private bid for a property in the Sifter Shore subdivision. Senator Alzada, thank you, Mr. Alzada, my partner, for, for waiting the entire meeting for your agenda item, but.
No problem.
Appreciate you being here.
He enjoys visiting.
I'll, I'll just get that water, I'm gonna drink that water.
That's good, right?
I haven't been drinking again, though.
I know, I saw, I was gonna drink that.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna ask, yeah, please don't drink it yet.
Well, good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Judge Alzada.
Attorney General Salas for Line Barber. I'm here today, um, requesting a resolution to approve a private bid. Um, as you know, Line Barber, your liquid tax attorneys, we're tasked with collecting the income taxes. If someone doesn't pay their taxes, we need to go forward with litigation, file a lawsuit. If they still don't pay their taxes, we take a judgment, we try to work with your tax payer and see what we can do. And if they still do not work with us, then we can move ultimately to foreclosure of the property. So when we do that, we normally have public, public auctions. We're actually, tax was obviously actually in public or private auction. We'll do public auctions because they bring more money back to the county as you have a bidding war that may start on a particular piece of land. Um, we are able to do private bids. Um, we don't do that, that much of the time because there's also a lot of transparency involved with the public auction. But private bids we do for several reasons. One of them is that, for example, the county may want a piece of land for a park or something that we have, uh, that we have foreclosed on. So we'll do a private sale to the county, get everybody's approves, you can build a park there. Or we have another option that we do sometimes that, um, if there's some, let's say, I live right next to a piece of land, it's under foreclosure, and I want it to go to, you know, talk, change, I, I want it. Sometimes we'll look at it and say, well, you know what, you could kind of use it, okay, well, pay us all the money on the taxes, everything owed. All the entities are squared up, we'll do, we'll do a private bidding. We have to come to the entities, each entity to do that. There's also another reason we do this for hardship cases. And that's what I'm coming up with you today. There's a different individual taxpayer that, um, we actually sold the property to her sister at tax, at auction, I mean, a few or four years ago. The sister transferred this property to this taxpayer that I'm talking about here, a citizen. What happened unfortunately was that she started to clear and build on this piece of land. It was the wrong piece of land. And she got the information, um, uh, from the appraisal district on the mapping system, which she should, shouldn't have done, to be perfectly honest with you. I mean, it's, it's not an accurate presentation.
And there's a disclaimer there all the way.
There's a disclaimer, it says, do not use this, you have to do your own diligence and research. But in any case, this woman did everything she's supposed to do. She, she cleared this property, she filed proper permits to get water there, get electricity there, and spend thousands of dollars to do this. So we were made aware of this and, you know, we, we went through all the different options. We can do it as much as we can. Um, it came up because the landlord wanted to sell this piece of property and basically told her, get off my land, that she had every legal right to do so. So in looking at all this and looking at the expenses she provided to us and we decided what we can do possibly is, um, see if there was comparable piece of land that which she, that she, uh, was transferred to her and see if we can make it whole, basically, right? So we found a piece of property in the Sifter Shore's area, which is in your packet, it's a vacant piece of property, it's brush. It hasn't been paid on in over twenty-five years. So it's just gonna be community taxes. We took judgment on it, we tried to get a tax sale, no one bothered. So it's actually now been struck off to all the entities. So Zapata County, Zapata is the Ince Shore's own this property now. It's not a community tax and it hasn't for some time. And what I'm asking you to do is to approve a resolution so we can do a private bid with this individual. She will pay the cost associated with it. So what does that mean? Court costs, clerk fees, publishing fees, sheriff fees, things like that. It comes out to roughly, um, two thousand, um, two thousand four hundred and three dollars.
And, uh, the liquid tax balance is about ten thousand, is that correct?
The liquid tax balance, um, currently is, um, for the county around.
Thirteen, six, twelve, I think.
Yeah, which is way more than the actual value of the law. We're gonna get that and have that a hundred bucks, it's the shore, so. So I'll make a motion to.
I select finish.
And motion by Commissioner Mendoza II and by Commissioner Raza to approve a resolution uh, for a private bid for a property in Sifter Shore subdivision.
And just for the, the source information, it has to be approved unanimously by all the entities. So I'm gonna go on May eighteenth to Sifter Shore's to request the same thing. And then Zapata is the May twenty-fourth. If Sifter Shore's or Zapata is the, um, denies this, then the, the private bidding won't go through.
Why, I guess the overall goal here is for this property to be developed and of course, that will start going into taxes.
Correct, and once it goes over to this individual and it's approved, even if she doesn't develop it, she'll be able to pay taxes. So there'll be, it went back to the tax road, there'll be money coming in, revenue coming in to all the, unless that's the goal.
All right.
Very good, we got a motion second, although the fair say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Alzada. Item number, we've got some consent items, Commissioner.
Make a motion for twenty-five to the sixth.
Motion by Commissioner Raza to approve consent item twenty-five and twenty-six, by I'm Jaffrey, second by Commissioner Solis, although the fair say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We got resolutions and proclamations. Item number twenty-seven is to approve resolution to designate authorized signatories for the twenty twenty-one Texas EDPG program grant agreement number CFC twenty-one dash zero one nine one.
Uh, Judge, I believe all these three are formalities for, for grants?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion again, then we approve twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to approve twenty-seventh through twenty-nine, second by Commissioner Solis, although the fair say aye.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Raza to adjourn, second by Commissioner Solis. And we are now, Judge.